I'd like to call the order, the Gregory and Woodland Park Planning Commission, for December the 10th, and we'll have a call to order and roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will start with John DeVoe.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Ken Hartsfield.
Here.
Pat Hislop.
Here.
Jerry Penman.
Here.
Marty Probst.
Here.
Peter Scanlon.
Here.
Charles Schrader.
Here.
Looks like we're all here?
We're all here.
Shall we take a chance, not chance, we'll take time, stand up and see the flag. Sometimes that's a chance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
The next item up is approval of the minutes. Anybody have questions or?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Public hearings. The first one on the agenda, item A, PUD 15-001, Best Western Hotel at Gold Hill Square South. I'm not going to go through and read all that because it's continued from August 22nd and then tabled from August, October 22nd, and now the applicant is requesting it to be tabled to January 14th, 2016.
That's correct. So staff would recommend that you table this until January 14th, 2016, and I'll just let you know that the applicant is making progress on revising his plans.
Any questions? We need a motion?
Motion to approve.
We need a second.
To table?
Second.
Roll call.
Jeff Watson.
Yes.
Ken Hartsfield.
Yes.
Pat Hislop.
Yes.
Jerry Penman.
Yes.
Marty Probst.
Yes.
Peter Scanlon.
Yes.
Charles Schrader.
Yes.
Steve Standard.
Yes.
And John DeVoe. Yes. Item B, case number FHDP 15-002, Loy Goulch Culvert and Driveway Crossing, request for an approval of a flood hazard development permit to install a 20-by-6 box culvert located within the special flood hazard area of the Loy Goulch and construct a driveway to access the new Valley View apartment complex. The access and drainage improvements are located within a drainage easement as shown on the replat of parcel 1R, a vacation replat of tract A, Jamestown Square, located on the northeast corner of State Highway 67 and Valley View Drive, containing 3.33 acres in the multifamily urban zone district as requested by Keith Meyer, project manager of America West Housing Solutions.
Thank you. I do have a brief PowerPoint and would like to let you all know that Mr. Meyer is here in the audience to be able to answer questions and provide a presentation. We also have the city engineer, Mr. Bill Alsbach, who is here, who can assist with any technical questions that you may have about the flood hazard development permit, which is required to be processed by, through the planning commission for recommendation to staff for issuance of this permit within any regulatory floodplain that FEMA has designated. So to begin with, I just want to get you oriented, you're familiar with downtown in the lower portion of this area, aerial, and Highway 67 north to Valley View Drive, the property is lightly circled in yellow. This is a closer view of an aerial of the existing property, the subject property that's outlined in yellow. The floodplain is identified with just some arrows here, but surrounding this property to the west is some vacant property in Stone Ridge, the O'Keefe Ceramics Building. To the northwest is the Tamarack Business Center. Immediately to the north are townhomes that were developed in Teller County. This is actually the boundary of the city. And then to the east is Woodland Park Community Church, a small office building, and south of Valley View Drive are also townhomes and a small pocket park. I thought it would be helpful to at least review some of the terminology that's used by FEMA in designated floodplanes. This is an exhibit that shows when we speak of the 100-year floodplain, it is actually called the special flood hazard area. And that flood hazard area is made up of typically a small stream channel in Woodland Park, the floodway, and the flood fringe. And this level in a 100-year storm is referred to the base flood elevation. So if we get a 1% rainstorm, which is what is a 100-year flood, then it will reach this top point theoretically of a base flood elevation of X, depending upon where it is along the stream channel. So whenever there is any construction being proposed within a special flood hazard area or the floodplain, then the applicant must hire an engineer to design that so that it does not impact the space flood elevation. In other words, there is no increased rise to the base flood elevation, and that water for 100-year storm needs to be able to pass through freely. That is what the engineer for this project, who is John Schwab, has proposed with a box culvert within the Loy Goulch special flood hazard area that is going to propose to be constructed 20 feet wide, six feet tall, and the width of the box culvert will be 30 feet. So I want to show you a few more exhibits. This is the zoning map with the floodplain for Loy Goulch that's overlaid in the shadow of the blue. The subject area is zoned multifamily urban. It's been zoned for a multifamily use for 15 years, since the year 2000, and you can see that there are a variety of different zones in this neighborhood with service, community commercial just to the east, some suburban residential, then more of the multifamily urban, which allows up to 20 units per acre. Then across the highway, Highway 67, is the Stone Ridge subdivision, which is zoned planned unit development. And then where O'Keefe Ceramics sits, that is heavy service commercial, light industrial. And north of Research is also zoned service commercial. And you can see how the Loy Goulch floodplain is quite extensive. It is channelized in a narrower focus near this proposed project, but widens out in other Here is an aerial that has the hash marks in it that shows the floodplain. I wanted to point out the highway had recently had an underpass remodeled here, a bridge replaced, and they went through the same process in order to replace that bridge. And you can see on the aerial how wide this floodplain is in this area, even though it is fairly channeled for the floodway through here, and that there is some vegetation. I'd like to point out, too, that the proposed driveway is going to be just opposite of the Columbine Village Drive so that this intersection will line up, and the new culvert will be placed approximately in this area. Here are some site photos that I snapped yesterday, and so I've also, this is the approximate location of the driveway that will be north of Columbine Village Drive and Valley View Drive. Then looking east along the floodplain, this is looking up the channel adjacent to Valley View Drive. You can see that it is fairly stable, it has some growth and vegetation. Then below in the right lower corner here is looking toward the northwest, toward that new culvert under Highway 67. And then the last photo is just a panorama of the developable property across the floodplain. This is the flood insurance weight map, the firm map, that the engineer has actually pieced together. I put both panels in your packet because this property is, covers two panels, but it identifies those base flood elevations, I know it's hard to read on this, as well as the floodway and the floodplain. And this is what's called an AE zone, which means that it has been designated with base flood elevations. Then the engineer, also in conjunction with this application, he did do a full drainage report for the entire site in order to justify that the detention on this property that is required to be installed for drainage improvements is going to handle the capacity of the runoff that will be created by the hard surfaces, the roof, the parking lot, sidewalks, et cetera. And our city standards require that they design the detention facilities to detain an aggregate of 100-year storm, a five-year storm, and 75% of the two-year storm. So it is very conservative to hold back that runoff and release it at the historic rates. So this overall drainage plan was necessary to do in conjunction with, circled in red, is the improvements for the crossing with the, through the floodplain and with the box culvert and the new driveway. Our flood hazard development permit requires a flood damage prevention plan. Essentially, this is the drainage plan, so it's very much the same as the previous slide. Shows the improvements within the floodplain, and this dotted line is the extent of the floodplain on the north side and the extent on the south side. That is actually the flood fringe. The smaller dotted line is the floodway. Oops. And also required is a grading and erosion control plan, because that is very important when these improvements are being considered and then installed, that the control of the grading and potential erosion control and sediment transfer and collection is mitigated through the entire project until that construction is stable. So that's the purpose of this plan. It also calls out for revegetating and stabilizing those disturbed areas. Lastly, in your packet are civil notes and details. These primarily relate to the grading and erosion control. It relates to detention, the facility or the structure that releases that water, that storm water, at a historic rate. It's also detailed here, and we will be receiving detailed construction drawings for the box culvert as part of the overall site plan review. So with that, the staff has fully reviewed the drainage report as well as the flood hazard permit information, and have found that the box culvert will likely result in a zero rise, which means no change to the base flood elevation upstream or downstream in the regulatory floodplain, and that the proposed drainage patterns will remain consistent with historic conditions, draining southwesterly to the existing Loy Goulch Channel, and no significant adverse drainage impacts on the downstream properties or the flood channel are predicted. And with that, the staff recommends approval for the flood hazard development permit and the flood damage prevention plan, subject to two conditions, that this permit, once approved, is valid for 180 days. In other words, they need to begin, receive a zoning development permit for construction to take place, and then secondly, that the applicant will, the applicable post-construction documentation and certification shall be provided prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And what that means is that the engineer will certify that it was constructed within the criteria that was established in the permit. I'll ask if there's any questions and also introduce to you, Mr. Meyer, to be able to answer questions as well.
Sally, I have a quick question. Construction of buildings are not allowed in the floodplain, per se. Is that correct? Or what are the?
Yeah, let me explain that. Buildings are allowed within the flood fringe. If you were to build in the floodway, then you are actually moving that floodplain, and you go through a very extensive conditional letter of map revision to relocate the floodway. But if you build buildings in the flood fringe, which is part of the floodplain, you can do that, but you have to build them one foot above the base flood elevation, and you have to waterproof or floodproof that building, and you have to show that you're not impacting that base flood elevation.
I can see that that doesn't affect this proposal, but I was just curious.
It's a very good question.
Thank you.
And an example of a building that was placed in the flood fringe here recently is the expansion of the Choices Building, and then they waterproofed their foundation, and then they were, received all the certification that they had a no-rise impact.
Thank you.
So it's not impossible, but it's.
More of a curiosity question.
Yes. But this proposal is only for the culvert to be installed.
I understand.
And the driveway.
Mr. Meyer?
Keith Meyer, project manager for America West Housing Solutions, Woodland Park. I'm not sure what else I can add to all that. Pretty tough. You know, obviously, we've got to put a culvert in in order to gain access to the property to build the project, and that's exactly what we're doing. And it's a concrete box culvert.
Will it be open at the top?
At the top, no.
It'll be completely enclosed?
It's, it's, it's got, it's a box culvert. Set up around culvert, again, driveway. These are concrete, they're square, six foot tall, 20 feet wide.
So can.
So it's almost, it's almost like a bridge, but it's a culvert, but, because they're not building a bridge, but it's, it's pretty good.
Can I have a ducky derby there? Can I have a ducky derby there?
See, this whole area right here is the culvert. You've got plenty of size to come out into the drainage area, but. Channel the water.
Is access guarded so that children don't go inside?
That's what I was asking.
So it's?
It's open.
Each end?
It's open, just like the highway one.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions? You can drive a car through it, it's 6x20. It's a big culvert.
Mr. Meyer, I had a couple of questions about what goes on top of this box culvert.
Just the driveway.
Just the driveway?
Yeah, and we'll have the safety barrier, you know, kind of fencing or whatever on either side, keep cars from, or they meet the, I can't remember the.
Guardrails.
Guardrails, yeah.
Any provisions for pedestrian access across that?
Not at this time.
I don't know, in previous discussion.
What's that?
I know when you reviewed it for the subdivision of the property, we talked a little bit about pedestrian access.
Right.
And it was decided not to provide that across this bridge?
Yeah, we've, we've got direct access to Centennial Trail all along here, and there's a sidewalk plan for Valley View. So our thought is our residents are going to, more likely it's going to go straight up the trail because it's within 25, 30 feet of the back door. And access here, if not wander all the way down the driveway where cars are and stuff like that.
And so in the event of a flood situation or a storm, the path which they get access to would be underwater, correct? By the highway?
Yeah, probably. In a 100-year storm, yeah.
Well, even in a two-year storm, there's going to be water crossing that, and it's not a raised elevation. So I'm concerned about not providing that pedestrian access to Valley View.
Well, it's an affordable housing project, and this is already a pretty expensive piece.
So you're discriminating against the.
No, no, I'm not just saying it's a expensive box culvert, and we're trying to keep our costs under control because of what we're, what we're doing here.
But you're lessening the design and not providing that access.
I don't think we need it. I think, I don't think people are going to drive, walk in the vehicle pathways from the parking lot to gain to Valley View. I think they're going to, they're going to go on Centennial Trail to get to the sidewalk.
I have a question.
What about the kids walking to school?
You know, I, we don't have access across the culvert at this point. It's 30 feet. The road's 26. There's, there's nothing to keep them from walking on the streets, like they walk on most of the streets.
If they're, if they're going to walk to the school on Kelly, they would go down the trail and walk along that existing trail and go down to Kelly's Road and go down to the middle school or the elementary that way, because if they tried to go down Valley View, which has no sidewalks at the current time, they'd all be walking the street. And I know that the city's got plans eventually to sidewalk Valley View, but it's just not there now.
And it's just up to the city. I think, isn't it, Sally?
This will be an extension of that.
We don't know when it appears going to do it.
Well, if there were plans down the road to provide sidewalks on Valley View, this would be a reasonable extension of that sidewalk. Providing across the culvert.
The sidewalk's on the south side and goes toward to the trail. It goes up this way, and then somewhere over here, past the church, it crosses over and goes on the north side of Valley, according to the sidewalk plan I was provided.
So whether the cross, at the crosswalk at the intersection or in the middle of Valley View off our driveway, you know, I would think it'd be safer to be going down to the intersection with its.
Effectively, it becomes an intersection with Valley View with your new driveway.
Right, but there's already a crosswalk here with the trail.
I can appreciate what Mr. Hartsfield is bringing up, and we tend to walk the shortest distances.
Yes.
So if you're wanting to walk to, up the street to Crestwood Park, you would probably likely use the box culvert to, to leave your property. Let me suggest that this driveway is going to be fairly low, low travel. There won't be a lot of cars coming and going with 25 units at this point. It could be possible to stripe that area so that you can create a center line and two sidelines, and then that way the pedestrians, if they use the box culvert, they can hug the side and feel at least there's demarcations on that driveway. Because right now, it's going to be 30 feet wide. The travel lanes can be as narrow as.
It's designed to be 26 right now, curb to curb.
26.
City standard.
Okay.
Curb to curb.
So.
There's a little extra room in there.
There's a little extra room for somebody to be able to hug, and it's, it would be very rare that you'd have both car lanes coming and going at the same time.
Where's the, the site development in review process?
Good question. It is, the full site plan review will be submitted early next month, so after the very first of the year. That will be about 30-day process with which it will be posted, notified, but that is an administrative review, so you're welcome to come in and take a look at the overall plan at that time.
But if we approve the 30-foot wide culvert now, there wouldn't be dimensional ability to provide a sidewalk with that future site development review, correct? And we're kind of tying into what's possible over that culvert?
Yes.
Based on the dimensions we're approving tonight?
Yes. And staff feels comfortable that 30 feet wide is adequate and not burden the applicant with additional area for pedestrian access when there are other alternatives.
The street is going to be 26 feet wide?
Curb to curb, yes.
For driveway?
Yeah.
That's maximum asphalt width?
Yeah, curb to curb is 26.
26.
Right.
But it's going to cut down to 20 when it goes through a 20-foot box culvert?
No, the culvert's underneath the road.
It's 20 feet long. 32 feet.
Culvert's 20 feet, six feet tall, but the road goes over top of all that.
But the road's 26 feet wide?
Yeah.
But the culvert's only 20.
Culvert's 30 feet long.
30.
But the hole for the culvert is 20 by 6.
Got you. All we're talking about, the 20 feet is for the box culvert part of it.
Is the opening of the culvert, the flood part.
Statures on either.
The water part, yeah.
Okay.
There's an opening for water, it's six high, 20 feet wide.
Okay, I understand.
And then you mentioned a traffic barricade on either side of the roadway?
Yeah, just because there's a drop-off on either side of this culvert.
And what height would that be constructed to?
What's that?
What height would that be constructed to?
Whatever the, there's a traffic, C-DOT type of standard that we've got to meet as far as barriers.
Right, but accessibility, ADA, and pedestrian guardrails are at a higher rate, at 42 inches, and exceeds the traffic barricades.
I have no problem, if you want to make them 42, we could, we could do that.
It'd be the same, they'd be on 24 with the sidewalks or right next to Highway 24, and there's barricades along there.
Correct.
Like by.
Yeah, I know, like say they're designed just for vehicles, to keep them going. But in this case, we, we can construct something that's 42 inches, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Would it be involved increasing the width of the culvert?
Just dollars. I don't know if it changes John Schwab's calculations or design, how that works.
Bill can answer that.
Because the length is all part of the calculation, how much water's flowing on the through and then spreading back out.
Isn't there another access if the kids are going to find the shortcut to go through the parking lot of the church and cut across that way?
Oh, yeah, it's all wide open.
They can go through that area as well.
We can encourage trespassing in our design.
But it's there.
Yeah.
There's no fences or anything right now, but they could put a fence up if they wanted to.
Sure.
Is there going to be any light there?
Yeah, we will put a light at the entrance, and there'll be a light, a sign out here in the corner, and then we'll have some low cutoff lights with the parking area as.
But will the, the culvert driveway be lit?
Yeah, we'll have a light out here somewhere, yeah. That is planned in the site plan. So people, and what we might do, depending on how we do the wall on either side, we might put lights on either side of the opening to, it hasn't been designed yet, but there will be a light there.
You know, when you talk about guardrails, 42-inch or whatever, it sure.
nice if they could be a little bit decorative and not a bunch of...
Oh, it will be.
Steel like C-DOT used.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at potential stone columns in the front.
Make it look like an actual...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not just gonna be a concrete.
Okay.
You know, like, yeah. There's a name for those concrete barriers.
Jersey barriers.
Jersey barrier, that's it. It's not gonna be a Jersey barrier.
Okay.
As you see on the highway during construction, and that could put money on the highway to come out and man it and stuff, none of that.
And refresh me, I can't remember the details. Is this the only vehicle way in and out of the development?
That's correct.
Okay, this is it?
That's correct. And we have no control of the church, owns all this property too.
That's right.
It actually goes up on the top of the church.
And then highways the other way.
Right, and there's no access agreements or easements or anything.
But was there not a provision?
There is.
Fire?
Yeah.
For fire, but not for people.
Yeah. There's an emergency access though on that, let me point to it.
There would be a flood on that culvert, they could get out another way.
Mm-hmm. That's correct. There is emergency for fire trucks and emergencies.
And the church won't run a fence, they won't come to church on Sunday?
Yeah, if there was a fence, it'd be a chain with a breakaway, like you've seen in a lot of situations.
There is a separate recorded easement that comes off this corner and comes out this way, so there is a secondary access, emergency access across the adjoining property.
But that's just emergency use, not for, not for daily use.
I may not be picturing this exactly right, but is there a possibility of having a bridge for pedestrians? I don't know, just throwing it out there.
It'd be cheaper to do, extend the culvert and build another bridge.
No.
It may as...
I don't think you wanna build a bridge.
No.
Just throwing it out there.
Bridges get into a whole different type of engineering, type of requirements and overflow ways.
Questions? Anybody else have any? Okay, hearing none, have a seat, we'll open up public comment. Okay?
Hi, my name is Lynn Pierce.
We gotta get you on record.
Adam, okay.
Okay.
Put me on my speaker, okay.
No, we just gotta get you out of the tape.
My name is Lynn Pierce, and my son and I have just purchased, though the closing has been set back, the property right there. So, not sure how to do this, but anyway, like, if you, if you walked out of the far end of this building and just walked over, I guess maybe a few feet, yes, thank you.
On Apache Trail.
Yes, right there, come down just, just a hair, 'cause you're not quite there yet, like, right above my finger, okay? And this condo unit has been there since the nineteen-seventies, okay? And this is a field right currently, okay? And it's very obvious you're, you're creek bed here, and I respect the builders and their future siding of the area. I will say a qualifying thing, I come from the city of New Orleans, where a hundred-year floods happen every couple of years, and also from North Carolina, where I worked with surveyors in the central area, where we don't have mountains like y'all do here. I mean, y'all have the corner on these mountains, right? So what's feeding into this creek bed must be coming off this high elevation, correct? Am I not understanding where the waters that feed this area? So I'm a little concerned looking at this. I would like to ask a couple of questions. What is this going to be made out of, the parking area? What kind of aggregate is there gonna be for this parking area? Miss... Okay, and obviously, all of this is gonna be impermeable, right? So no water is gonna go through, what I'm referring to is rain comes down, hits dirt, the dirt allows the water to go through. When you have a driveway that is like a roadway, water can't go in, it sheds off to the sides. So what you're saying here is that all of this rainwater is gonna have to shed, now it's gonna start flowing at a rate, okay? And then they're gonna add it through here in a narrowed-down culvert. Now, I've seen these situations, and the reason why I'm meeting, speaking to you, is because some of the neighbors up there, where we're talking about buying, in these forty-plus year-old condos are concerned, are very concerned, of course. They've been paying taxes and voting for forty years in these buildings, right? So they're all concerned because it does change everything, and once you change it, you can't go back and unchange. And as I presented to different planning boards around the central North Carolina area for my surveyor that I worked for doing these presentations, these were all considered, and a few times, we got it wrong, and you couldn't undo it. Now, I appreciate that you wanna build buildings for people who are gonna need a home. It's a beautiful place to live, and I want y'all to continue to have a beautiful place, 'cause now I'm a part of your community. And I appreciate that these folks wanna do that, but before you say, "Go ahead," consider what you're working with. So I'll let you have it.
One of the things that we talked about, that you didn't have the, you weren't here at our last meeting, okay?
Just discovered this weekend.
And there were people from that area that came to that meeting and asked those same questions you're asking now.
Sorry.
Okay, and Keith, you might explain where the, 'cause you got up and talked about this last time, and talked about the grading and the, and the way it's pitched, and how that's gonna take place.
Welcome to the community. I've been here twenty-five years or whatever. Glad to have you. What we've done here is, this is really flat right now, and we actually are tilting the property. You see these lines here? We're actually raising that up here and tilting all this, this direction.
You're going to...
So all the drainage, this end, all the way drains to this retention pond. So we're actually adding slope from the north to the south. It's out, it doesn't exist now. And there's a drain, concrete drain pan across, this is an asphalt parking lot, but there's a concrete drain pan that picks up all the water on all this, this whole area, and then we have another, right now, drain on this side that comes down and goes, goes into the pond also. And this is designed to collect all that historic water that's out there now, and hold it and release it into the drainage system at a historic rate, and Bill can probably explain this better than I can, but we've actually probably improved what's out there now, because we're actually picking the building up on the north end, and building steps in three locations afoot. So we're actually raising the north and tilting everything to the south to increase the slope from north to south. Right now, it's, it's, it's pretty level, it's almost too level.
Yes, I understand that, but you actually do more detriment to the property that I'm...
No, we gotta, we're picking up, we're putting the drain in here that doesn't exist now, and actually picking up drainage even up in here and bring it all the way down to the south.
Well, ultimately, it's your community before now, you know, and any commitments you've made and decided upon, I can't do anything about that. I just had to express myself because this was popped on us. Apparently, in your community, there is no burden of sharing the information of what's going on on a, on a boundary ring property. In North Carolina, it's an absolute must. You must know, before you put a place up for sale, you must have any boundary ring property changes that are known. And I'm not saying I purchased it fifteen years ago and there was no knowledge.
And there's properties posted, and we notify every property on or within the hundred-fifty feet of this type of application.
Yeah, a young person not having had experience would not know that in the absolute. The burden of proof is on the seller and the seller's agent and...
And they should've got notification, they should've got notification in the mail.
They should. But I just, I...
The seller?
The seller was notified.
You wouldn't get it, 'cause you don't own the property.
Not yet.
So the seller would, would have the notification.
See, see this, this...
And it's between you and the seller.
...of that equation. But the reason why I'm very concerned about this is because of seeing projects that went down, and just participating the last ten years in the recovery of New Orleans where it, you know, it shouldn't have happened, and now they're completely changing everything because all of a sudden, within a forty-year span, you hit two, two hun- two hundred-year floods, and...
Hopefully, we've had a couple hundred good floods in the last five years.
Hopefully, we won't be like the ninth ward.
Yeah.
We're above sea level.
We do have some very conservative flood requirements that require a lot of, a lot of engineering in before we get, get to the point where we can even pull permits and stuff. There's a lot of work underway on this, and we're not even, got the construction drawings done yet.
Mr. Myers, will this actually improve what they've got there now, you know, if nothing was done?
Yeah.
Because right now, that's the whole point.
It's just helping the field.
It's actually gonna improve your property.
Yeah, right now, everything kinda drains, you kinda see the dash lines here, everything kinda drains up here, going in this corner, and some of it comes in and down this way. There's a kind of a mound right here, not very high mound, but there's some dirt piled up there, but right now, it just, there really is no drainage pattern to the existing lot, and we're tilting everything to make it drain from north to south to the retention pond. We're collecting a hundred percent of the historic flow.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other questions? If not, we'll close the public comment. Anybody else wanna talk?
See if anybody else...
Did you have anything else you wanna say?
No.
Okay.
I just wish I luck.
We wish you well too. Yes, sir.
May I address? Yeah, I'm Bill Osbach, I'm the Public Works Director and City Engineer for the city. Water Resources is my technical background, I spent three months in, in New Orleans, right after Katrina, rebuilding the water system. But I can assure you, again, hopefully have you leave here with the confidence that the city of Woodland Park fully understands exactly what you described with the permeability changes that are occurring on this property. You're exactly right, that the grass and soil that's out there currently soaks in the water. By putting impermeable pavements, rooftops and such, speeds up the water and gets it to the drainage courses. That's why we have a very conservative detention requirement in our code. We recognize that. So when we build projects like this, we have to drain to this detention pond. Now, we can't hold that water, because the water rights in Colorado are much, much different than they are in Louisiana. Different commodity here. So we can't hold that water, so we do detain it. So we collect that water, and we are very conservative in requiring the volume of that pond to be rather sizable. Collect that rainwater and then release it to the historic drainage pattern at a very measured rate that is, cannot exceed the historic rate. So if this project is gonna drain water away from your property and away from those other residents, some of that drainage kinda goes that way now. We've been out, we've had some very significant rainfall events, we've actually had a couple of near hundred-year rainfall events in the last few years. It doesn't mean the creeks flow at a hundred-year rate, but we've had very substantial rainfall rate, and I've been out in all those storms and observed how these things perform. But that's why we have the codes that we do to allow development, so that homes like yours and then future homes can be built, because if we didn't allow any construction, we wouldn't have anything here. So we have to find a way to allow construction of homes. Your home, I believe, is probably in the county, or your property is in the county, has little different requirements than what the city does, but the city has much more stringent drainage requirements and erosion settlement control requirements than the county does. So we really honestly believe that we're addressing your concern about increasing the impermeability of the impermeableness of the, the soil and the surrounding area, dealing with that in a proven way. We've been having this detention requirement for many, many years, and here, it's not new. We have updated our criteria and all to reflect what we think is kinda the, the state of the art, to protect our water courses, our natural resources, and our adjoining properties. I appreciate your concern, being a water resources person, thanks for asking. Are there any questions that I might be able to answer for you?
As far as, you know, the ground layout, I really don't have a whole lot that I could influence on that. The, the major thing that struck me when we were looking to purchase in Woodland Park, and now my son works in Woodland Park, I've been, so I am still adjusting to your altitude. But the, when I read through this, I was a little surprised by some of the other aspects. Now, what we're talking about today is the gulch and the culvert.
Yes, ma'am.
So I appreciate your time, and I may have other questions, but they're not specifically about the water, I mean, you know the difference between a permeable pavement and a non-permeable pavement and retention ponds, and we do a lot of that in North Central North Carolina.
We don't retain any water, we only detain it.
Detain, well, so many...
We release it, it is, absolutely is.
Okay, but, and I'm sure, if you're gonna invest, all your investing in the rest of the property development, that you're gonna try and get that right. I just hope and pray that you do get it right, because you cannot really go back on something like that. Once it's reshaped, it's reshaped. So I wish you well with that. But I would have other questions now that we're aware of our neighbor, neighborhood changes, I would have other questions, but I'll save those for now.
Okay, well, we are focusing on the, the culvert, and the detention pond, you'll notice, discharges downstream of the culvert. Discharges here, so discharge from this won't affect that culvert, so... Any other questions from Planning Commission for me? Thank you for allowing me to indulge.
Thanks. And Ms. Pierce, if you'll leave your phone number with Dave at the back, we'll be happy to schedule a time that we can get together to talk about the entire project.
Now we'll close, close public comment, okay? Any final questions, things you guys wanna talk about? Any questions you wanna ask staff or the applicant? Or Bill?
Mr. Myers indicated there's not gonna be anything on either side of the culvert that is going to prevent... Are kids gonna get into that culvert? I mean, what, what's to prevent them? I, I don't know how tall it's gonna be, I mean, like...
Six feet.
Six feet.
Okay, so they can walk under it?
Sure.
I think there should be something to prevent that.
There's not one under sixty-seven, there's no way to keep them from walking under that.
Well, I don't know that kids are down there like kids are going to be in these apartments.
Literally, not even across the street, it's under...
Well, the trail goes right by it, and we do have some culverts that we have grates on, and many, many that we don't. And quite frankly, the grates can be very problematic, especially in the drainage like this one that has a lot of vegetation upstream, that those grates and such can collect the, the vegetation, plug, cause the overtopping, and cause the failure of the, of the culvert or the, the bridge structure. We have many, many culverts around town that do not have grates. This one is relatively short, the one at sixty-seven that the trail goes right by is much, much longer. So, is it to say they, they can crawl through, they can walk through there? Absolutely, they can walk through there. But it's not unheard of that we have plenty of culverts like that, and we only put grates on the few that are very, very long, like the new one that we built, because it's very, very long, and it becomes a confined space entry. The upstream one, there is not the chance for much debris, because it's, the, the water should is all built up, and so we don't have chances for large debris to get in there and plug those, so grates and stuff need to be well thought out and, and put in purposely. So, I would say the hazard done by the... So I would say the hazard down by the, the one under is the CDOT 67 is, is more hazardous, but it really isn't a hazard, but if you get in the creek and a flood, it's, you know, it's, could be, you're going to wash through that, but.
Any other questions? Thank you. It's not time. Somebody wants to make a motion in a second or continue discussion, whatever's your pleasure.
Now, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the flood hazard development permit application flood damage prevention plan subject to the following conditions that were outlined earlier. The permit approval is valid for 180 days from the date of permit issue, and if use of construction has not commenced within this timeframe, the permit must be renewed, and all applicable post-construction documentation and certification shall be provided prior to issuance of a CO for the apartment complex.
Second.
We've had a motion in a second. We need to call the question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, beginning with Ken Hartsfield.
No.
Pat Hislop.
Yes.
Jerry Penner.
Yes.
Marty Probst.
No.
Peter Scanlon.
Yes.
Charles Schrader.
Yes.
Steve Stannard.
Yes.
Jeff Watson.
Yes.
And John Dova.
Yes.
Seven in favor and two opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could have opportunity to explain my vote?
Well, it's kind of after the fact, how much time do you need?
Two minutes.
Two minutes you have.
I just cannot support the design without the pedestrian access and concerns for that, so just want to go on the record for my reasoning. Thank you.
Oh, that's fine. You've got time left, you want to keep going.
No.
Oh, no, that's, that's fine, I'm just having fun. But now it's your expense, but, okay, that completes the stuff we had on the agenda tonight. We're going to have a work session after this.
Yes.
Okay, that's going to be brief, I was told. Anyway, reports, I have none. Any commissioners have anything they'd like to talk about or bring up? Okay? Planning Director always has something.
Just a couple of things, we have two monthly reports on your desk, since we did not meet last month, and then, secondly, we will meet our next time in 2016 on January 14, and we want to wish you all a happy holiday.
Thank you, thank you for the event of last night.
You're welcome.
The approval's very good. Okay, anything else? Or shall we have a motion for adjournment to go?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor? We will resume at 8 o'clock, it's great time.
I will not be. I thought I had technical issues with it.
Well, we're talking, the design committee, the mainstays are just trying to make the town more walkable.